Administrators present? And if so, we should add it to the.
Yep, no problem. I have my notes, so I'll just review it.
Okay, so we'll re- so we'll hold off on the executive session. And we'll table that, postpone the vote on that until the next meeting for those amendments. So thanks for bringing that up, Jen.
Thank you.
So can I have a motion to approve the September 30th regular minutes? Oh, sorry. Okay. All right. So we'll go ahead and roll call the board for approval of just the regular minutes.
Yep. Mrs. Leonard?
Yes.
Mr. Myers is absent. I'm sorry. Mrs. Perella?
Yes.
Mr. Pepe?
Yes.
Mrs. Portman?
Yes.
Mr. Eisenmeyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Donaldson?
Yes. Okay. Luca, student representative.
Recently, students at Keel Elementary have been celebrating Keel's school's 30th anniversary, which was this month. Students opened the time capsule created on the occasion of Keel's school's dedication in October 1995, and are creating their own time capsule. The theme in Keel's Let Grow program this October was Spread Your Wings, as students have worked on independent self-selected projects. Keel Cisco has also had their first assemblies of the year. The Be Great Show used magic and humor to educate students about the pillars of character, and the Harlem Wizards came to generate excitement for the Kinnon staff versus Harlem Wizards basketball game. We thank Keisha and the KHS HSA for bringing these events to our students. In addition to these, the Kinnon Police Department will be presenting Halloween Safety Assemblies for the students tomorrow, October 29th. We thank them for taking the time to do this. The Art Club and the Board Game Club have started and have been meeting after school. We thank Keisha again for making these activities possible for our students. Lastly, the Keel Cisco Halloween Parade will take place on Friday, October 31st at 10:00 a.m. We'd like to thank Keisha for sponsoring the Be Great Assembly, which was also featured at Stony Brook this month. In addition to Keel Cisco, students at Stony Brook kicked off their Let Grow program as well with the theme of Spread Your Wings. Students chose their first project that they worked on independently. We are looking forward to November with the next theme being service. Stony Brook's chess and art clubs have started. Thank you to Keisha for sponsoring these amazing programs. Sorry. The first ever K through five skate night was a huge success, as students enjoyed a fun-filled night of roller skating. We would also like to thank the KHS HSA for having the Harlem Wizards visit with our students at Stony Brook, as the students enjoyed the Wizards versus Kinnon staff game. In preparation of Halloween, the KB- KPD will be meeting with our third grade students about Halloween safety on October 30th. Stony Brook's Halloween Parade will also be held on October 31st at 11:15, and the School Musical sponsored by Keisha will be held on Sunday, November 2nd at 2:00 p.m. We hope to see everyone there. PRM had a great Spirit Week during the week of October 12th. Spirit Week ended on October 17th, closing out with an exciting pep rally that took place during the day. As for athletics at PRM, we would like to recognize the Boys and Girls Cross Country Teams with, um, which both play, which both placed fifth in counties. Congratulations to both. Lastly, the eighth graders will have a trip on Tuesday, October 28th, to see the show called Tales of Edgar Allan Poe at the PAX Amicus Castle Theater in Bud Lake. We've had some outstanding academic achievements here at KHS. We had four students recently recognized as commended students or semifinalists via the National Merit Scholarship Program. Congratulations to Zachary Kessler, Olivia Lee, Sebastian Lee, and Soloni Metal. In addition to this, on October 27th, the KHS Colt Chronicle Student Newspapers took home, nine awards at the Garden State Scholastic Press Association's Fall Student Press Day at Rutgers University. Our sports teams have been having a phenomenal fall season, with Boys Cross Country earning first place in the NJAC Conference, and Varsity Football with a winning record of eight and one and a division title. The first round of playoffs will be held Friday at 7:00 p.m. at the Spiro Sports Center. Our student section was also named the Week Six Student Section of the Week by the NJISA. Spirit Week was hosted last week, October 20th through 24th. Thank you to the Student Council Executive Board and Mrs. De Stories for making this amazing tradition possible. Congratulations to the senior class, who ended up beating the junior class by just one single point. We would like to thank the KHS HSA for organizing the homecoming dance this past Saturday evening. Around 140 students attended, and our homecoming King and Queen, Soren Parada and Courtney Darlington were celebrated as well. Senior students and families were invited to participate in a college planning and financial aid webinar with the KHS counseling team last colle- um, last Monday, October 20th. Juniors and their families should mark their calendars to attend Junior, Junior College Planning Night with the counseling, uh, with the counseling team on the evening of November 20th. Tickets for KHS's The Great Gatsby will soon go on sale as well. The show will be performed on November 13th, 14th, and 15th, so look out for the performance times soon to be released. Lastly, we hope that families will join us for coffee with the KHS admin team on Wednesday, November 12th at 7:30 a.m. This will be a great opportunity to engage with, uh, with us on all things KHS.
Thanks, Luca. That was a lot. We're busy. Okay. Superintendent's update.
Thank you, Mrs. President. Thank you, Luca. Welcome, everybody. And what I have for you here tonight is an update on the board's approved 2024 to 2029 strategic plan. As I shared in the Citizens Advisory, there are 22 slides, and there is a lot of information. It's positive information. It's a lot of work. Starts with the board and central office and our building administrators and funnels right down into all of our staff. You need a strategic plan. You need a roadmap. It's also a board goal for this current 25, 26 calendar year, so, we're ahead of schedule there. So let me get started. Just a little bit of history. If we go back in time, we had our first strategic plan meeting on September 27th in 2023. That was all about strengths and challenges and opportunities. We met again on November 2nd, and when I say we, I mean the board, central office, district administration, teachers, parents. It was a, it was a whole group. And then the last and final meeting was January 25th of 2024, was goal-setting and objectives. And then the adoption by the board in spring of 2024. And again, it's a fluid document. It's a five-year plan, but really, it's a roadmap. It's a map that steers the district financially. It steers the district programmatically. It steers us from security, transportation. Every facet of what we do is built into here. And no students are left behind at all, if I ever reference their NCLB, and we move forward. So the meeting won outcomes. We identified strengths. We identified some challenges. Everybody has them. So we wanted to maximize our strengths, and we wanted to, um, overcome our challenges and our opportunities, which I do believe we have been doing and will continue to do. Meeting two, we had shared visions. What is it that we're looking for? Who do we want to be? How does that fall out? And you see here with literacy and math fundamentals, we talked about the scores last month. I know that I embarrassed Mrs. Utell in asking her to stand up, but I'm sorry. That's the way that that goes. Technology and AI integration, Mrs. Trombetta's office has been nonstop, and our folks in our regular tech department and our hardline tech. It's been three years in a row of infrastructure upgrades and then training for our staff. SEL and resilience and bringing back grit, and that it's okay to fall down as long as you get up, and that friends are around you and learning old-school ways in a new-school world. Global awareness, cultural adept students. We have them. You heard Luca, our student representative, just speak to it in all those awards. And then modern infrastructure facilities. We continue to do that, step by step, day by day, year by year. We're not in a position where we would want to go out to a referendum. We talked about that last year. It was a board goal. We discussed it. We felt it best to stay away from that. We've been creative in finding means and methods and increasing our budget and going after state grants. We have a few up for approval tonight, um, and being creative. And that's how we will do it. So, um, meeting three was just finalizing the goals and moving things forward. So we have district goal one, and again, as you could see, it's very in-depth with the goal statement of empowering students with academic and technological competencies to be flexible and adaptable. Underneath, there's four objectives from 1.1 to 1.4. And then the best way possible, and in central office when we were putting this together, I, I finally gave into Mrs. Trombetta today, because I had a different version of it, um, but I think hers read a little bit easier. Goal one, key highlights. We wanted to make highlights for everybody. So when you go down that and you do a comparable, the one-to-one technology, now, yes, that did roll out during COVID and was steered by COVID money. Well, guess what? That ran out years ago. And there was no backup plan. So now you have these, these, um, devices with no plan that break. Now what? So we've been able to, in three years, actually catch up, but that was the idea. AI integration, we know that. Mrs. Trombetta is now the AI coordinator for the district. We passed that plan and that, that adoption. Unified digital platforms, professional development for staff, and technology teams, and 21st Century program planners. I don't want to read each one in between for you. I do promise that this informa- information will be on the website tomorrow along with, and I hand this for the board, this document. Thank you again, Mrs. Trombetta, for creating the, uh, the Cliff Notes version, but it's very good. It'll be up there. For those of us that are old-school readers, like us, all of us here, this document would be the easiest thing to follow online. That'll also be up there online tomorrow. Continuing with goal one highlights, media curriculum modernization with K8, culinary arts, vocational pathways. I mean, so much that we're doing. Expanded the wood shop. We have a phenomenal teacher in there now. We have a new robotics teacher, engineering program, home repair. These were things that our students, we went out to our students and asked in a survey, what do you want? What do you want to see here in Kinnon High School? If we can make it happen, what is it? All right there. Tomorrow's teachers program. That was Mrs. Thomas brought that, and Mrs. Jexo's doing an excellent job, I believe. What do we have? 11 students, Mrs. Jexo, in that program? What do we have? Seven. Okay. The top number's 12. We don't want to exceed that. That's for students who actually want to go into education. So it's an opportunity to learn for two years. Psychology, sociology expansion, conflict resolution, and community-based instruction. It's all ongoing and implementing. District goal two, create an environment that promotes academic achievement for all learners, pre-K 12. We included the pre-K, even though it's not state-required, but once they're ours, that's why we went to inclusive all day. And then you see those 1.1 through 1.4 quite a bit, encompasses a lot. Early literacy and foundational skills and standards-based reporting and assessment. And regardless that the State Department constantly has school districts now, it's early fall testing, and I know what's been going on in our buildings, and I want to thank our admins and central office and our teachers, because it's quite cumbersome to deal with more state testing on top of teaching and learning and homework and regular assessments through the course of the year. But we deal with it, and we've had the increase in our scores to show it. Professional development for our, our staff. One of the first things I ask them when I walk through the door is, what do you want? How do you see it? How can we do better? What can we do better? And they wanted to move away. And actually, Mrs. Jexo, you and Mrs. Toddros both were part of that, uh, those conversations, representing different buildings at the time, um, and had a voice. They had power. And then curriculum alignment and revision, you know, social studies grades four through eight, bridge to middle to high school, and then the pre-K through two creative curriculum implementation. It's a lot. We wanted to focus on our special ed population with executive functioning skills and study skills. Our CST has been doing an excellent job, regardless of the, the influx or the flow in the, at the head of the department through the years, still doing a strong job. Our building principals are really in tune and in depth with special education. We wanted to bring in programs we have, especially here at the high school with both of our programs. Strengthen relationships with TCNJ and NJ School Jobs for partnerships and fairs. That's where we're finding people. You gotta go knock on the door. You have to find people. Believe it or not, people today don't look to work. I don't, I don't know if that turned off during COVID or what, but folks don't want to come out and work. It's a different market than when I started in 1996. Totally different. We were just happy to have a job because everybody wanted the jobs. Today, it's not like that. So, um, and then, of course, student wellness, special services with programs. And real-time, actually, aside from being an excellent tool for informational purposes and scheduling and data, it helps with child study team. It's, it's, it's quite good. Works well. District goal three, community engagement. We wanted to engage all the stakeholders to ensure inclusivity of all community members. Well, we have our citizens advisory. We have all of our meetings. We put out all these forums. When I first came on board, there was a feeling from community members that, hey, we don't have, you know, we're not in forums enough. We don't, we don't have enough interaction. Our building principals did a tremendous job from day one by having forums and creating forums. And we went to a security forum. We went to curriculum forums. What we found was that in, I'd say, 18 months, nobody came anymore. We'd get folks maybe online. We'd have a lot of folks reviewing the day after or the week after, but nobody wanted to come in person. They had enough. I think it was a little bit of overkill. I have that habit every now and then. So we still upload them. They did a great job, our administrative staff, in getting that information out to parents. It's there for you. But nobody could say that we don't engage folks. There's always an opportunity to engage my office, our stakeholders, and of course, the board. Colt Connect, uh, Mrs. Trombetta, you, you put that together. Fantastic. Mrs. Donaldson, I give you a lot of credit. You had a, a vision in a, one of them late-night committee meetings years ago, and all of a sudden, it, you know, we went down a little bit of a rabbit hole. I lost my way, but I don't know. Mrs. Trombetta found it and put it together. Really, there are a lot of other districts, several, that love our Colt Connect, and that informational piece, that you can find anything you need right here. So, um, that's a big one. The parented community workshops, expanding, uh, family engagement. Now, Mrs. O, you're going to do your breakfast on November 12th, the day after Veterans Day. That's nice. It's another good way to engage parents, give them an opportunity to walk through the door, and of course, showcasing success. So, three times a year, we always, um, honor our athle- our athletics, but also we have our PRM pillars of character. You have Keel School Koala Kindness. You have Stony Brook, our students that have the math awards or their reading awards. We bring students up. We honor them, and we'll continue to do so. Actually, the December meeting is all of that. So December, March, and June is all about our students every year. That's what we've been doing since I, I came and the board. That was a board initiative, discussed in, in the board interview process so many years ago, which seems like a, a light year away. Community and safe partnerships, where we partner with KPD on all our fire drills. They're constantly in our buildings. We have our class threes. Obviously, we changed, uh, we practiced reunification. God forbid. We do it twice a year at all our buildings and all our sites, just for muscle memory and just so our staff knows where and when, as well as our kids. We need KPD involved in that. They are, and, um, that's something that we'll continue to do. We'll never move away from that. And of course, the MOA, um, the Memorandum of Understanding with the law enforcement, uh, folks. We launched quarterly special services newsletter. That, that's coming out, Mr. Zaleski. You said this December. So look for that. That quarterly newsletter's coming. We, we continue our weekly newsletters at all the buildings. We have sports days to connect the high school teams and our youth programs. And, um, we're planning a tra- plan the transition and work-study program for KPEG and BOE meetings to celebrate inclusivity. So that's coming. That's from high school programs we have right now. I know Mrs. Thomas is working with Mr. Zaleski and our staff interior-wise here at the high school. So that'll be a presentation in the future. And then number four, it's another big one. It's operations. It's everything we do that's encompassed. And that's the development of state-of-the-art facilities to ba- based on our student needs and learning needs. There's quite a bit. In the room we're standing in right now, the board is committed. We drew down a quarter of a million dollars on our, um, surplus for this current budget for the acoustic and auditorium, uh, sound renovation. We have the KHS track renovation. We have HVAC and boiler upgrades for ESIP. And, um, now we're approving the, um, PSENG proposal. That would also be a 60-40 split, whichever one comes first. Hopefully, uh, we'll move in that direction. Uh, we did replace two of the rooftop units of six up on Keel School, and we're looking at redesigning the PRM Media Center. Security improvements, obviously, vestibule and entry upgrades, electronics access systems, surveillance upgrades. That's district-wide. And again, that's ongoing. Again, fluid document, um, facility planning and expansion, uh, the auxiliary cafeteria expansion. That's the outside piece. I know, Mrs. Sappio, I think you had a big piece of that with the kids years ago. We're looking at wanting to, I, I don't want to say beautify it, but I guess in easy terms, yes, with an awning, maybe some lights, redo the pavers or do something there, whether it be concrete, something a little bit more stable that doesn't dip or flood for our kids, so they have an outdoor space to use during lunch a little more often than they do. Not enclosing. And at first, we envisioned enclosing it, but then we figured, why would we have to? We don't need to do that. So it'll be a couple of dollars. We all know what that stuff kind of costs at our own home, but it won't be 1.1 million like the architect suggested if we wanted to enclose it. Big difference. Big, big difference. The Stony Brook lockers. I know, Mrs. Toddros and Mrs. Utell, don't, don't yell at me, but yes, we want to look to move away from the lockers and storage, um, and the locker room renovations. PRM, we, we cleaned those up, thanks to Mr. Cantella. Brought me in about a year and a half ago, and I, I, um, it was time. And I'd also look to do that here in the high school in the next budget cycle or two. And then goal four continued. We have our route consolidation. We talked about that tonight. And CAC, more information with that will come out, uh, in the February and March public meetings, leading into our budget approval, final budget approval. Efficiency analysis. We're monitoring to reduce redundancy across the board with all of our schools. KHS grounds, uh, improvements, the landscaping, the walkways, the visitor bleachers. And just so everybody knows when, I know it's an eyesore, because I live here too, the visitor bleachers. We have two quotes, so when I say we, I mean central office and the board. And so for those of us that are the taxpayers that would fund those bills, the first quote, total project was 265? 235. The second quote was 366? Okay. So just so everybody understands, that's why it's not as simple as ter- I can't stand it. I couldn't stand it the second I moved into town and drove down Kinnon Road. But you can't just rip something down and have nothing. And when you're talking about a quarter of a million dollars or more by these contractors, we're kind of stuck. So we're looking, we are looking. We are going to improve it. We want to add the walkway over there for our visitors and for everybody. And we'd also like to repurpose those bleachers to the practice field, if possible, but, uh, it's a lot of money. And you just can't spend that kind of money because you want to. You have to really vet out the process. So we're waiting for one more bid to see where we land. And then, of course, we're developing that three-year outlook program. Uh, Ms. Lawler and I will be working on, in our collective bargaining agreement with the association next year, they're due for a 3.3% increase. So we're looking at our whole staff, aside from our admin and central office, which is small compared to the mass, but we kind of know where those numbers will lie anyway, and we're going to have what that denominator is. So when we're working through our budget, no matter who wins the election next Tuesday or not, we can figure on how we're going to balance things the smart way. So, um, that's that three-year outlook. You want to be in an 18-month cycle. You're in the current budget. You're planning for next year, and you're going to plan ahead. And then the long-range facility plan, actually, next month, Ms. Lawler will come up, and she's going to present our long-range facility plan and then showcase every project that we've completed since January 1 of 2023, which again, is a testament to the board, the folks that are elected. This is the job that they have for no pay. And it's cumbersome, to say the least. So it's a lot of credit to them. Um, it's a lot of talking. It's a lot of time out of their life. And so the roadmap forward for us is to continue to progress and monitor the BOE and district goals. I'll update, I update them twice a year. Halfway point in February, and then final in June. Prioritize the funding alignment, expand partnerships as best we can. I know we've been doing that through the high school, uh, with dual enrollment in college coursework. Strengthen our student supports and regular progress reports or community updates like we're doing. So, um, did I go over the 15 minutes there, Mr. Miller? I bypassed it?
Close.
Close? Where am I?
I think it's 14.
Yeah. So, um, I don't, does anybody have any questions? Do you want me to back up? This will be on the website tomorrow, also with the hard copy of what I passed out to the board. Listen, it really is a roadmap, and so when we're talking in these meetings ad nauseam, it really gives you a playbook as to where we're going. Any questions online, Mr. Giannaselli? Anything? Nothing? Yes, Mrs. Simpther. Yes. Yes, most districts look at a 12-month. We want to ban out 18, meaning where are we? What do we know in the immediate? And then where are we behind that? Kind of like, you want to play that balance. That's how you really start to get healthy. And like I said in CAC, we're getting healthy. I don't want to come out with anything specific. I'll let the auditors do that, because that's, because that's what they do. But it took a lot of hard work to get there, and that's why I had mentioned that during the interview process for the business office last spring and the board as well. We want to be on an 18-month ki- this just doesn't go away. We're not a one-shot-in-a-pan deal anymore. Those days are over. Definitely.
And the budget calendar that was approved is for, it's, um, more internal for staff, where we're going to have meetings. We're going to send memos to staff and start, um, really delving into the budget. So it's looking at 26, 27. So that was approved at the last meeting. And then, as Mr. Mango said, we always look at the next year ahead as well.
Schools are meant for kids. We all know that. I don't want to quote Nick Nolte and date myself from the movie Teachers at 84, but I love that movie. But the reality is, without strong financing, you can't do anything. So that's, so it took us to this point to get here, and, um, we're just moving it forward. So, um, I want to thank the board. I want to thank central office and all our admin, and I want to thank everybody who's, who's here listening tonight. I, I hope I didn't bore you. That's all I have, Mrs. President.
Thanks. So in essence, what we do is we're fine-tuned, we're building next year's budget, and then we're, we're outlining the budget after that with all the items we know from capital, projects, and our continuous staff costs. And that way, we kind of have a framework from which to look ahead and make sure that, because we will be having to address roofs for the high school and the middle school, which was, um, pointed out to us from the architect's, uh, evaluation that we had done in 2023. So that's some, so there are some big-ticket capital reserve projects that we're going to have to kind of look to anticipate to cover. But we also have the HVAC, which is another really big one that was in that as well. But we've had some other grant opportunities. So when we can build those out, then we can take advantage of grants, like rod grants that we did with the other two buildings. So that's the idea, is to get way ahead on some of those really big-ticket items, so that, because those grants take time. So that's where we're trying to look for the 18 months out, just to clarify. Okay, we are now up to, so thank you, Mr. Mango, for that. That was, uh, that was a lot of work. And I also would just like to emphasize too, that that was a community effort, and we had a lot of community members come, um, and help us outline the strategic plan, which is how we do, um, come up with our district goals every year, our district and board goals. So our hats off to the community administrative and staff that participated. We had a lot of people participate. Okay, we're going to go on to community report, committee reports. Uh, first up is finance. Carl couldn't make it tonight, so you're up, Frank.
Thanks, Jean. Also, nice to see everybody. It's easier to do this when there's people in the audience. So I love that, and I love the engagement of this community. First and foremost, at the Finance and Facilities and Security Committee meeting, which was held on October 23rd, Caitlin did a nice job of finding a $3,494 free school grant, um, to support no phones in schools. So because we had already, uh, started the initiative of taking phones out of schools, um, in essence, we were able to find a grant, that will be on the agenda for approval, so that's good news. Thank you so much, Mr. Metta.
Uh, Ms. Trombetta did a lot of work there as well.
Thank you so much, Ms. Trombetta. As we do at all of the FFS meetings, we reviewed our 2025 capital expenditures and maintenance schedule. Uh, we do have some ongoing capital projects that we're working through right now, um, which have been referenced in prior meetings, culinary arts, uh, the acoustics, and some other things. We've also had some unplanned maintenance, about 131K for HVAC and boilers. Again, not any impediment towards our budget. In looking at some other capital projects that have been closed in the year, we have a small bit of favorability. Hence, we're under budget, and we're discussing if we can use that capital for other things this year. More to come on that in future FFS meetings. We've had some discussions, uh, about both the flagpole, uh, outside near the football field and a new scoreboard. So we're discussing potential donations or financial pathways, uh, for new flagpoles and score, and scoreboards in collaboration with, um, some people in the community who would like to see that happen. On the agenda tonight, we're going to review a topographic survey, uh, for our fields outside, so it's going to be an expenditure to review how we can, So it's going to be an expenditure to review how we can uh, get the survey done and utilize the fields more effectively. The agenda is just the um, approval of the survey, not doing anything subsequent to the survey. We have a P S and, we have a P S E and G opportunity that Mr. Mango just mentioned. Um, there's a potential program to improve energy herein. I believe it's a 60, 40 split. And there's no capital outlay to start. So basically P S and G, P S E and G, I don't know why I can't say that tonight. Um, comes in, evaluates where we can save energy and uh, there's financial benefit to our school district. Um, we're also working through a water infrastructure grant submission. This is a reimbursable grant applied to water fountains. And there's a resolution to approve that submission tonight. So we would invest that capital upfront, get reimbursed subsequent to that. Uh, additionally, in some other resolutions tonight, um, Ms. Law, Mrs. Lawler was uh, looking for some updated modules in our accounting software, which will improve some of our business efficiency and continue to give us the correct level of visibility and some of our financial reporting uh, and planning, which I think is spectacular. And as Dave has trumpeted, we've done a, a nice job with that. Um, we touched on the visitor bleachers, which at the time of the meeting on the 23rd, we had received one quote. As of now, we had received two. Uh, the quote was 235K. Uh, and we thought that was high until we saw a quote two. So we discussed that, but no further action in the meeting. We looked at the 26, 27 calendar draft, uh, and we came up with what is up for approval tonight. Uh, you'll see later on in the meeting. For 26, 27, there was some alignment about adjusting our half-day timing um, to consolidate kind of or so to consolidate or align the timing for PRM or KHS. Um, timing is going to move closer to four hours depending on busing. Right now, our current half-days are really like two-third days, um, because we still go to school for about four hours and 45 minutes uh, in some of the schools. So just alignment and standardization. We are going to move forward with a winter dance team pilot program. Um, that will be approved as a club rather than a formal sport to ensure that we have the uh, participation without taking away uh, from other sports that exist uh, in a very heavy winter with a lot of sports at a small school. Um, it's going to be a moderate budget to it, so bringing that up, but nothing big. Uh, we also have up for approval, some minor revisions to the bus driver handbook. We of course look at that every year, uh, make sure that it's up to snuff. Everybody's reading it and we're all good. Um, and we're discussing, as we had at the citizens advisory committee and here and just now, the consolidation of buses and what that looks like um, from a financial perspective to ensure that we are good stewards uh, of our assets and of our budget. So really heavy meeting. It's good.
Thanks, Frank.
Thanks, Jean.
Personnel negotiations. Jonathan?
Yeah, personnel negotiations met last week. Um, it was pretty standard meeting. Um, we have not, uh, we do have a, a calendar, um, we have calendar the next um, negotiation session. And I believe that's the night after the next board meeting in November. Um, on the agenda are basic, you know, a lot of housekeeping things, just kind of keeping things moving, making sure teachers are on assignment or getting reimbursed and that kind of stuff. Did want to mention, um, if you didn't see it towards the back of the packet, that's just where it is because it's in order. But that's where they are, um, job descriptions, um, up for just discussion at the moment or first reading, however you want to put that. Um, for class advisors and co-curricular positions. Um, so just take a look at that. Um, those stipends are part of the co-curricular list already. There are people already incumbent in them. There are incumbents in those positions, um, but the descriptions themselves, um, take a look at. Yeah.
Thanks, Jonathan. Okay, education student activities. Kelly?
Sure. So we met on Tuesday, October 21st and we um, discussed a PRM, potential PRM sore present, presenter uh, that we'll be approving tonight. He was the first legally blind athlete to play in D1 football. He went to Louisiana State. He's a really impressive young man. I think our students are really going to connect with him. Um, so that was a great way to start our meeting. We talked about the calendar draft as all the other committees did. We talked about the half-day minimum revised end times that I know you talked about in um, the other committees. We talked about the um, the dance team and I really just wanted to showcase here because I know Jen took the time to share this story with me. We had um, four freshmen reach out to Jen and really say that, that they had the agency and the autonomy to say that they really wanted this program. And I love it that Jen was, Ms. Aliuale was able to send out a Google form, see if the other kids were interested. We got 18 kids that are interested and you know, we're, we're going to make it happen. And I love that, you know, those girls were able to do that. There are 10 uh, home basketball games, so that is where they're going to be doing it. As Frank had already said, we're going to be rolling this out as a club, see how it goes. And then we can always go bigger, but that's really how it's going to start. Um, Elena DeStoriz will oversee it. Um, we also talked about really how to showcase our KHS athletics. Um, we really want to make sure that we are showcasing all the amazing things that our athletes are doing and that we really make sure that they're recognized for their achievements. So we talked about how to really do that in the most impactful way. So that's still an ongoing conversation. Um, as Mr. Mango had said earlier, we have been receiving some estimates for visitor bleachers, much more than we thought that they were going to be. Um, hoping to actually recycle the ones that we have in another space and then maybe get some new ones based on the third quote that's, that should be coming in shortly. Um, we have PRM and KHS math replacements. Um, Mrs. Thomas was talking about um, just how, how wonderful the RTI program has been for a lot of our students. So that's a program that we have that identifies any student at risk. Um, and when a student enters into that program, Mrs. Thomas reaches um, reaches out and lets them know kind of what they can expect while they're in that program. So there'll be an engagement, a parent engagement meeting on that coming up. Um, we also have, the NJSLA has changed their format this year. They're going to make it a little bit more interactive. So in order to um, to set up what they need for the spring, we're doing like a trial run in the fall. So just kind of explaining to us what needs to happen, getting all the teachers involved in that. So it's going to be a fall trial run and then it's going to be held in the spring. Um, we had an AP English book approval. It's that book by Jonathan Haidt that a lot of us have read and love called The Anxious Generation. I'm really excited for our students to read that. Um, they're going to be learning about the power of persuasion through literature. So um, they're going to read it and then hopefully have some great conversations on it. Um, we also talked about the Science League at KHS, which is a really great opportunity. We're always looking for opportunities for our um, science students. Hope, thank you so much. I know you brought this forward. Um, for our science students to learn more about areas of interest. And this club will actually give them the opportunity to test against other students in New Jersey and within the nation. And if they rank, then um, they can really see how they stand up to the rest of the country, which is really awesome, in very specific areas within science. Um, and then we also talked about, uh, we really want to showcase uh, honor roll moving forward. We think it's a really, it's a big accomplishment for our students at KHS. So really how we're going to um, let those students really feel valued and appreciated for all the hard work that they do. And then maybe that might motivate some other students too. So it was a busy meeting. Thanks.
Wow, yeah, it sounds like it was. Um, okay. Fall NJSLA.
The fall field testing is going on now at Stony Brook. It will start next week. At PRM High School, we did mandatory, we have to.
So what is it exactly?
So taking the students through the test questions and the state says it's so that they can analyze the item questions to set it up for the spring and supposed to get the students comfortable for it. So the actual test questions they're seeing are from the prior year's content. So fourth graders are taking third grade skill-based questions on reading, writing, math. Um, again, at the high school level, high school students have this in for it based on the math.
And the intent is to inform? The test to see? Okay. It's a new format this year?
The fact that it's adaptive, yeah.
Just for strict analysis at the state level, students will not receive score, no report.
No, I'm, I'm not concerned about that. I'm already concerned about the imp, impediment and instruction time in the month of May, which is really time-consuming and takes away from our instructional period, which was one of the reasons we started school before Labor Day. Because we have so little, like, May is basically awash with NJSLA testing.
The state, everybody's concerned. They've been voicing their concern.
Okay.
We were told that it was mandatory. We do have CUSAC coming up here in the district next year, so I wanted to make sure.
Right, no.
Um, but it is an issue across the state. Teachers were not happy about it, that they had to take a couple of days away for the fall field testing. But they're doing a phenomenal job getting his students signed in and, and I don't think that, you know, I think in some areas we might not have had to use the entire time, which is good. And we'll be able to just move along and go on with instructions. So.
Okay.
Not the best news ever, but you know.
Does anybody have any awareness of this? It was like just sprung on us?
They sprung this on us in the summer and it wasn't a lot.
All right. This is something maybe that we put down with that um, the county legislative meeting. Because uh, we're already testing, I mean, when we, when I was at the can, uh, the school boards convention two years ago, it, they brought it up. The state board of education actually doesn't like it either. It's a legislative thing. So, yeah, yeah. I'm sure there'll be a lot of people that are concerned with the amount of testing and the time. Okay.
I, I could. I'm at a point in my life and my career where I could say certain things. I'll just say I, I understand it's mandatory and we have to follow. And yes, we're CUSAC'd again next year. I am not a fan of this at all, zero. Sometimes the state comes up with these great ideas like HIB and a lot of other things. And there's no financial backing. It's a complete disruption to the school day. And it moves away from the core, one of the core essential reasons of why we're in school, to learn, to socialize, to grow, not just to constantly test. So I agree with all our teachers who voiced their concerns so far. I'm sure more will. Hopefully maybe there's uh, some changes real soon.
Well, that's certainly what um, a union voice would be good for as well. So.
I think if a few large districts manned it together and pushed back. Um, unfortunately, it's, you know, the carrot or the stick. CUSAC scores and these things, it's, it's unfortunate.
Okay, well, we do have a new uh, organization with the county, so we'll bring that up and see what we can't do. Cause this is um, I mean, it's like the, the, the graduation test. It's, uh, the whole thing is whatever. Okay. Um, I just wasn't, until I read the minutes, I hadn't even heard of it. So thanks for putting that in your notes. Um, okay, so policy. Jen?
Uh, we did not meet this past, um, because we, we don't have any first reading for policy. So it's just second reading, the policies. Um, I did, just looking at the HIB report, brought up to Dave earlier that the way it's reported for the board members to read, to be able to say yes, you know, approve it. I feel like there needs to be some more details in there. So we were talking about next policy meeting, having administrators present so that there could be kind of like a conversation on like, these are the details that would be helpful to us to know whether to say yes, that makes sense. It's a yes or a no HIB.
Right, that actually, thank you.
To what Jen, to Jen's, I'm sorry, uh, to Jen's point, what I was going to recommend, but we were just having discussion, is that tonight, the um, HIBs number two and three that we move forward, one is a second reading, one is a first reading. But when you look at them, you know uh, the information, you have the background. Both to table four, five, six, and seven, so we can get together and talk about it. Um, I did send out a communication to our admin, just giving them the heads up that from here on out, with HIBs, it, I think it'd be a little bit better, um, and more constructive if we all got together. It's only a half hour and we just talk. Doesn't always have to be face-to-face. If some people have to do Zoom or however we manage that, we can manage it, but I think it's easy. Um, based on that. So I, I would, I was going to recommend when we open the A through D section to revise into table four, five, six, and seven.
Okay. All right, we'll do that then when we go through um, discussion on those agenda items. Nope, 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 that's fine. I mean, it was appropriate for policy. Okay, um, and we all discussed the calendar, which was really a big thing anyway. So, yeah. Um, and nice work on the calendar. I really, I really appreciate all the effort in making that work. Okay. Delegates, uh, New Jersey School Boards Association?
Um, the one thing I wanted to point out is I saw a survey come through to all board members from the NJSBI. If, you know, you want to take a look and provide input, it's there.
Thanks. I get so many emails from them. I don't read them all. Yeah. Thank you for pointing that out. Okay. Morris County School Boards Association? Whoops, Carl's not here. Legal representative, Jonathan, anything?
Uh, they haven't been in session lately because it's silly season.
Right. Uh, Morris County Educational Services Commission?
Not till January.
Community Relations and KEA Liaison? Are we doing that anymore?
That, uh, KEA Liaison is December 4th.
Okay, so I won't mention that again until December 4th. Um, K cares?
Nothing.
Nothing, okay. And KEF, that's on me. I keep forgetting. I gotta schedule that appointment, that meeting. Okay. Petitions and hearings of citizens on agenda items. If anybody has anything for agenda items only, they're welcome to come up and bring them up to the board. Sir?
Hey there. Um, so first of all, I just want to thank you guys for what you do. I'm sure the time committed tonight is just the tip of the iceberg. Seen all the work you guys do. Uh, so by, by way of introduction, my name's Chris McGrath. My wife and I have lived here, Amanda, have lived here for 11 years now. Um, my daughter goes to, my daughter's nine. She goes to Stony Brook. My son is in sixth grade. He goes to Craig School. He's got special needs. And so that's really the reason I'm here. Um, I reached out about him joining the wrestling program. He's a huge uh, athlete. And actually had to leave uh, coaching football to come here. Uh, he's, he's a cult, one of his favorite times of years when he gets to play Butler in the mayor's cup representing Kennelon. Um, so I reached out to the athletic director and was told that he couldn't play uh, wrestling for Kennelon for, um, sorry, I get a little nervous talking in public. Take a deep breath. It's funny, I do this for a living and it, in front of people directly, it's difficult. Anyway. Um, basically the net of it is because he goes to private school, according to NJ, NJSIAA, he is ineligible to enroll and wrestle for Kennelon. Uh, even though um, homeschool kids can, there's like an exception for homeschool kids. And I actually, I think I sent you all a, a note about this. And so when we, when we found out that, hey, this is a state issue, it's not really something the board has control over. The first thing we did was read every line of the constitution of NJIS, NJSIAA. And luckily we found a loophole, right? So in uh, in the bylaws, Article V, Article Five, Section G, Clarification Six, it actually does say that a pupil who is disabled and placed by the parents or guardians at their own expense, which is us, uh, in a non-public school for treatment of the disability, shall be eligible to participate in the athletic program of the student's resident school district, provided the student otherwise meets eligibility requirements of the program and the student's participation has written approval of the Board of Education, uh, where the program is located, which is why I stand in front of you. And so Colin meets all those requirements. All we need is board approval for him to participate.
Okay, so um, what we'll do is first of all, you read all those bylaws and I'm impressed.
It's a little bit of chat GPT.
Okay, okay.
NJSI double A, Mr. McGrath, is like a kangaroo court. Trust me. So that's impressive that you found that.
Yeah. I mean, we'll just, you'll route it through the, it'll go to the athletic director and then we'll.
Okay, so yeah, I, I think I've seen.
But you have.
All of the emails to all of the people in this room.
Yes, the only. No, the only question I have is um, you have to register. When does registration end? Soon, right? Oh, he's registered. Okay, okay, okay. So, so you're all set. So once it comes up to us, we'll, yeah. I mean, unless there's something we, we're missing, we should.
We could do a small revision.
We're just doing that?
If you want. I mean, I don't, if somebody want to pull the.
Yeah, okay, why don't we, alright, so you have, you have a.
If you're in favor, then we could move that forward. I didn't see a copy of this, Mr. McGrath.
Yeah.
Did I get that? The one with the circle, Mr. McGrath, is that bylaw?
This is just a reference to what I actually find it in the bylaws this year.
Yeah, I saw your email. I saw your.
Yeah, see, I wasn't on the emails. Okay.
Jean, I just have a question. When does, this is for PRM, right?
Right, so I think what we'll do is, I don't want to hold up the meeting, so what we'll do is, we'll go through, I think we can, I'm not sure it needs to be board approved. Oh, you're saying it does have to be board approved, okay. Well, it's not going to hold it up because November, we can approve it. The meeting's the first, the second or the 18th. So then, and plenty of time for wrestling season. So we're going to go ahead and take a look at this. I'm just going to tell you, I can't see why we wouldn't approve it unless, I mean, if that's what the law states, then we'll approve it. We'll just approve it officially at that meeting. Okay, but I don't want to tie it up with this meeting in our agenda, but we'll add it to the next one, board approved, and I'll sign it that night. Okay? Oh, yeah.
Mr. McGrath, you may not even have to.
You don't have to come.
Come out here in a month. We'll just stay in contact with you. Somebody from
Yeah.
the office will be in touch with you.
Yeah, you don't have to come. It'll just. Because we'll probably, we'll have to draft the official letter, have it signed.
Yeah, it's like the, yeah.
Yeah, it'll probably go through the attorney or something like that, just whatever, and then we'll have that, and then we'll put it on the next, the agenda, because then plenty of time for him to participate. When does wrestling start?
It's November.
Thanksgiving?
Right around, no.
Okay, okay, well, we'll make sure, if we have to, we'll make sure it gets done, so he can wrestle.
Pro Miller's the 17th of, which is a Monday.
Monday, okay, alright.
So we'll have something to you prior to the board meeting, and then that'll just kind of be
The.
a walkthrough.
Right.
But I am happy you found this, because I, you know, in, what is this, year 30? So 25 years of the 30, I've been involved in high schools directly, and the NJSIAA doesn't do anything about all these private schools recruiting our kids with, you know, they have these staged bylaws, but it happens day and the night all over the time, and then they want to make it impossible for families like your own to join us, and then when you contact NJSIAA, they tell you, don't do that because of this, but nobody tells you about this. So if you didn't find this, we wouldn't be able to do it. So thank you.
I'll thank Mrs. McGrath then, so you could tell her I said thank you. Awesome. Alright, thank you.
Thank you so much for coming. Okay, agenda items. So I'd like to have a motion for a roll call on a block vote on agenda items A, B, C, and D. Can I have a motion?
Second.
Okay. Okay, so discussion on, well, we're, sorry, discussion on them first. So any discussion on agenda items A, D, A, B, C, and D?
Is this the point where we're going to table?
Yes, so we do need to, so one point of revision is for, we're going to postpone the vote on HIBs four, five, six, and seven, so we'll remove those for vote. They will be discussed, referred back to policy for those four HIBs.
I'm wondering, does it make sense to table all of the first readings, you know, just with the same consideration? I didn't think there was a discrepancy when I read the one, you know, that.
Well, the second one's the, number three is not confirmed, so we're not, we don't have to approve it.
Okay.
Yeah.
I get it.
Let's see, I did have one thing I wanted to bring up on the dance team, was that not only, one of the reasons why we really wanted to move forward with it and make it a club this year is that there were a lot of seniors that wanted, I think four seniors that wanted to participate in it, and we wanted to give them an opportunity their senior year, so we decided to do that right now as a pilot club, so the seniors could participate. So I just wanted to point that out. Not only did the freshmen bring it up, but then when it went out to the whole school, there were a bunch of kids that were very interested. 18? 19, so, yeah, very exciting for those kids. Yeah, that was really great. Then, the one thing, I'm just still really don't understand under, and I know it's in the contract, so it is what it is, but the class advisor positions, the junior class advisor makes $500 more than the senior class advisor, but the senior class advisor looks like they do more. So if I'm going to approve a job description, I don't understand what the $500 discrepancy is. Because if you look under senior class advisor, I mean, the senior class, which I'm grateful for, for all of my kids that have been seniors, do a lot. And that's great, and there's a lot of coordination. I just, besides the prom, unless we take the prom off of the senior class advisor, and it's really just the junior class advisor, I just, that was what I was told originally, was that that's why the junior class advisor has, makes so much more money. I mean, it's $500 more, right? 500 and. $520 more. I don't know why.
Somebody somewhere along the way, when they negotiated their stipends, they included an extra couple dollars. I'm going to think it, if I went back old school, it's probably because of the prom, but that would be all I could ever think of. I don't know.
So I'm just saying that from the job description, what I'd like to do then is postpone the vote on the job description. I'd like to send it back and kind of maybe revisit that, because I'd like to justify the $520 of what that's for. Because I know the junior class is the one class in this school that does a lot. They have a brunch, they have sunrise, they have sunset, they have, they have senior awards, baccalaureate. I'm missing something. Something, oh, they go to Dorney Park, they, yeah, they have project grad, there's a lot that happens senior, which is amazing. I don't know of anything the juniors do specifically besides what everybody else does. So I'd like to postpone the vote on that and kind of tweak that and get some more feedback from people. I'd like some justification at what that money is for. Okay, is that okay? Alright, so we'll amend the, is that policy?
Under the B section.
Under the B section, okay, personnel, okay, so. Alright, so we'll send that back to personnel.
And also, I just wanted to thank Ms. Lawler for revising the out-of-district placement tuition number there, because I thought it was really high last month, and she found it and it's corrected, so thank you for, yeah.
Yeah, thank you for catching that, by the way, yeah. Anybody have any other discussions? I think that was it.
Non-agenda items at the end.
Okay, alright, seeing none, you can pull the board.
Are you calling the vote now?
I have a quick question about an agenda item, just about the.
Oh, oh, about agenda, sorry.
The calendar with consolidating the minimum days, that would be across schools? All schools would go to four hours? I'm sorry, was that what I heard?
Oh, okay, just a little bit of clarity from that, from Mr. Pepe shared, is that the elementaries actually are. The problem with the elementaries is that it's the shortest day that I've ever seen in an elementary school, it's six hours. Typical elementaries are anywhere between six and a half to seven hours and 15 minutes. We did try to negotiate, but, you know, we also had PRM on the schedule and we knew what was happening, so that kind of fell off. But their day won't change. The four hours is the four hours. After we get through next year, we might look at what does that really look like? Because it's our transportation, our bus personnel that are telling us, we think if you moved Stony Brook and Keel back to eight o'clock or somewhere in that window, not getting the students to school, it's at dismissal that they're all, because then KHS and PRM are seven hours, so they're going to go an hour beyond them.
Got it.
And it's like, that's where it's the, it becomes a little bit sticky. Salute. But for the high school, their half day is four hours and 45 minutes, and PRM is four hours and 25 minutes. So it makes the half days or those early dismissal days that especially, let's hope that we don't have any craziness with the weather, because it's everybody's worst nightmare, but it never ends. It's like a day of hell. So our thought is, next year, once we know the start and end times of PRM and KHS, those are like four hour and 10 minute days.
Got it.
And that's it. Everybody's gone. Not this, like, the high school starts at 7:25 or 23 right now, and they don't get out until almost 12:30. That's a long run.
Yeah, that makes a lot of sense. Thanks for the.
Um, please state your name.
I'm Lauren Langone.
Thank you. Mrs. Leonard? Uh, we're pulling the board for. Yeah. Okay, Mr. Perella?
Yes.
Mr. Pepe?
Yes.
Mrs. Portman? Mr. Eisenmeyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Donaldson? Yes. Okay, Committee of the Whole, is there any business for Committee of the Whole? No, unfinished business? Does anybody have any unfinished business? New business? Correspondence, is there anybody, anything online? Do we have any letters or anything? Nope, okay. Okay, any petitions and hearings of citizens, non-agenda items? Do you want to say anything to us? No one?
Sorry, my name's Eric Houck. Yeah, sorry, first board meeting ever. My wife sent me. She had heard about a consolidation of the schools at some point. I don't know if this is a town rumor or whatever, but she wanted me to come and ask if there's plans with the budget to look at potentially closing Stony Brook and consolidate schools, so, yeah.
Let me, I'll give this, so you take it back home, it'll be nice and easy. I will, the board has directed me, but it's also part of me as well, so I'm not going to put it on the board, in looking at all avenues to be safe financially, to just be financially sound. A couple years back, when the health curriculum was heavily contested in a lot of towns across the state, the state had told us that if you do not implement, they didn't say how, they just said if you don't, that they would pull our state aid. Well, I've been part of that under then-Governor Christie, where everybody lost state aid with his first budget address. And so that never left me, because that's a very daunting task when that's taken away, and I tried to tell folks in our community then, you don't want to do that, because if you lose that much state aid, which right now I believe we received 3.2 million, it's a lot of money. Where are you finding it? And so one of our goals is for me to look at what that means. So in the February public meeting, I will present it. It's not happening, it's just, hey, this is what we found. This is what you would need personnel-wise, this is the cost estimated, cost maintenance and care. This is how the buildings would then be facilitated, this is the grade level. If there's ever a rainy day and you need to, much like the courtesy busing, not the consolidation of routes of PRM, KHS, and the elementaries, but courtesy busing, if there's ever a rainy day, since our buses are half-filled all the time, but we're paying for it as taxpayers, you got an ace on a hole. You know, one day we'll all be gone, but somebody's going to be here, and cost only goes up. So that's all it is. It's not, it's not a rumor, it's fact, but that doesn't mean anything's happening. It just means you have the information.
I got it. So it's a, depending on what happens with funding, it's a Plan B scenario. If funding were to be pulled and the budget had to be balanced, that could be one avenue to balancing the budget.
It's an option, yes.
So we've done a really good job balancing our budget and keeping things, we're doing really well, we're very healthy. But if there's something where all state aid goes away, there's a new election coming, there's, if things change, right now federal government's shut down, we do have this as a backup plan. It's basically an exercise, kind of a contingency plan. If we needed to, we have it, because we are, we are, we basically have a district that's capacity of over 2,000 children, and we have about 1,600. So we have a whole building's worth of kids that we don't really need that building for. So this is in case we needed to, this is how we would do it. It's just to have that in the back plan.
Kind of like a reunification drill that we run, God forbid, in the worst case scenario, at least everybody knows where they have to go and what they're doing. Financially, then you know where you are.
We do the same thing. I work at a bank and we do the opposite. If we were, had to get broken up, what would we do? So this is the opposite. If we had to bring it together, what would we do? I understand. It's very helpful. Thank you.
But no plan, that's not really the board's intention. We have no plan to close any buildings right now. Just, we like the way it is, but, yep.
You got it. I'm glad you asked.
Okay, board member comments. Who wants to go first? Frank, why don't you go first?
A couple comments from me. One, just, I kind of had put a comment out there that I wrote for myself, but the diversity of success that we're seeing in our school district is absolutely amazing. Every single time I turn a corner, I'm talking to some of our school's leadership, some people at the board office, people in the community. Just today, Luca listed off a plethora of things that are going right in our school district. Let's rally behind that and celebrate. The newspaper, nine awards from Rutgers was amazing. The athletics right now going on with football, the support of having the best fan section. These are exciting things, and they're not just limited to kind of one scope in our school. All the departments across all schools are operating very effectively, so I want to congratulate everybody on what I'm calling the diversity of our success during the fall. Two, I always want to thank our leadership about their, I would want to thank our leadership at the board office and in the schools for their accessibility. Ms. Olawale's initiative on the 12th to invite parents to breakfast and see what she's doing is amazing. You know, there's no better way to get feedback than opening yourself up to that feedback and requesting it, which is why I also love everybody here asking questions. You know, I think that's awesome. And then, three, I want to thank Caitlin. I think in the FFS committee, all the grants that you're tracking down is amazing, and much like we're talking about fiscal responsibility with some of the things that we're doing for long-term contingency planning, Caitlin is pounding the pavement every single day, doing that at a micro level, and those wins stack up. And lastly, you're welcome, and lastly, you know, I want to thank Dave for his transparency, as well as the, all of his team. There's going to be a lot of good information that's publicly and readily available. Should you ever feel the need to kind of quote or discuss things with your fellow townsfolk, I think referencing the information that exists would behoove everybody for good fruitful conversation.
Thanks, Frank. Would you like to go next, Kelly?
Sure, I just wanted to thank Dave. I know there were 22 slides tonight to talk about our strategic planning, but it was really, really important information, and it really gave such great, it was such a great opportunity to talk about all the seeds that we've sowed and how strong our leadership team is, and how the community came together, the stakeholders came together, the teachers came together, our administrative team, and we figured out what we really want for our schools. And this board has just worked tirelessly with this leadership team to make sure that we are moving forward, and we planted a lot of seeds over the last couple of years, right? Like, that started 2022. So it is, it's really great to see how many wonderful things are coming to fruition now, and it's amazing what awesome things can happen when people work together. I love, I love that. I love teamwork. I also wanted to say that the grants are amazing, so thank you for working on that, and thank you for kind of hitting the ground running with, working with us. I feel like there was no learning curve with you, like, you just started and it was a very difficult job, and you've really jumped into the role really well. I just love our leadership team. I think that everybody works so hard tirelessly, and it's all for our students, so thank you to everybody, all of our principals, too. And that's it. I hope everybody has a very wonderful, safe Halloween. Have a good night.
Thanks, Kelly. Jen?
I echo what Kelly and Frank were saying. I just wanted to also thank the two families that donated things to our school, the Bosch family and the, I don't know if you say it, Dries or family. And I know that there's other families and community members communicating with the FFS committee about other donations, and, you know, it's very, very appreciated. And from what I see, I feel like the donations and dollars that are given are used well and good stewardship, so it's good. Thank you.
Dana?
I have just one comment that I intended to share last week at committee, and I actually forgot. I ran into a parent of a nursing student who's off in college now. She wanted me to share, and so I think it's actually better to share it tonight, how grateful she was for the allied health program, the teachers, the curriculum, all of the background that her daughter was able to obtain at the high school here. She said she's thriving, and some of the other students are really struggling. So it just kind of brings up the academic piece, preparing these students for, you know, what they're going to face. preparing these students for, you know, what they're going to face in real life, hopefully successful careers, along with all of the other, you know, values that are, um, supported here. And then just the, the pathways that I know Mrs. Trambada, Trambada and, uh, Mrs. Thomas are working on additionally, sort of some of those, whether they be business, engineering, just additional coursework to sort of line up the curriculum so that these, you know, interests are really supported here at the high school. So, that's all. Thanks.
That's great. Jonathan?
Yeah, ditto to everything, and I'm done. No, um, but yeah, uh, you know, thank you to everybody for all the hard work and looking at the, you know, the planning and working together to make those plans, um, and looking, looking to the future. You know, you're sitting in this room, um, and it gets used all the time by a lot of different people for a lot of different things. Um, long overdue for an upgrade, not just paint. We're just about to get into the busy season down here. Great Gatsby is just a couple of weeks away, and then there's going to be all those col, all those holiday concerts, um, that are going to be in here. So, you know, in the not-so-distant future, you know, things are going to be, um, improving, you know, all around. And it's just an exciting time to, you know, not just work, uh, not just work on the planning side, but to start to see things happening. You know, this time next year, there's going to be a home ec, um, lab for better, you know, for better word for it. We already have a, an instructor lined up for, for that, you know, and it's just incredible that we're able to, you know, put our, you know, put our heads together, ask what, what we would love to do, you know, dream about it, and then see it happen. So, um, it's great to be a part of that. It's great to be working with everybody here and, um, great opportunity for families for now and the future too, so. And one last thing.
Yeah.
I asked because I was un, not unaware, but I don't have it in my phone. But next week is three half-days and two days off.
Yeah. Well, it's three half-days.
For anybody else that might need to remember that.
Not for the high school, right?
High school has Wednesday.
One half-day, and then. And the elementaries have, right? For teacher convention. Dave, do you want to say anything else?
Uh, no, I, listen, we're, the way I do math, we're a third of the year through, even though it's the end of October. So, a lot of good, hard work. Uh, like Mrs. Perella said, it's been non-stop for three years for us. We'll just keep it moving forward. It's Halloween week, it's a great time of year, it's a great time to be outside. I know Facing Lakes will be lit up on Friday afternoon and Friday night. Everybody just have a good time. If you have some free time, come to the state game. If not, enjoy your Halloween wherever you are and have a safe weekend. There are some people out there that, you know, take advantage, so just be aware. That's all I could say to our parents, to our students. Make good choices and be aware of people. But, uh, overall, good time. Good time to be outside and be happy.
Okay, I just have to say I'm really excited that Let It Grow is, we're doing stuff with Let It Grow. If you read Jonathan Haidt's book, which I'm now really excited some of our high school students are going to read, I might just make it mandatory in my house. Um, I think that's really awesome, because it was a, a board goal, and we're really excited about that. And one of the goals that I've had since I've been on the board is to just really make this a spirited, fun, great place to go to school. And all the things that we've been talking about, the diversity of success, the planning that we've been doing for years. I mean, I've been on the board for five years, and it's just been something I've been really trying to do, some improvements that actually make this place look great, like Field of Dreams, if you build it, they will come. If you build it, they will stay. And that's really what we're doing. And Spirit Week and all the fun things we did for Spirit Week, and the hu, like, the homecoming dance was a huge success, which is really great. That's, you know, school's a lot of work, but should be fun too. And that's one thing that the board's really, has been focused on since I've been on it is, let's make this a really great place to come to school and want to come back. So, on that note, I'd like to thank everybody for coming and for asking questions. Please come anytime. And if you're not sure and you see stuff on Facebook, you can go on the website, my email's right there, DonaldsonJ@Kinnon.org. Don't send it to Donaldson J. Students, that's my son, he's thirteen, and he will not read it. But if you send it to me, I will. So, please reach out, and anytime you have a question, come to a board meeting, come to Citizen Advisory Committee, or email me. So, other, with that, that's it for comments, and we don't have an executive session, so can I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All right.